The September twelfth, twenty twenty four regular meeting of the Manchester Shortsville School District Board of Education. If we could all stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a lot, uh, lot going on tonight. Really excited to have you all here to join us. Thank you very much for that. I think we're gonna kick off with, um, some of the formalities around our newest members of the Board of Education from the student body. So this is, again, Mr. George, can you do just a quick intro of our new students? And then, Mr. Burns will do the oath to the student board members.
So you say quick, but the thing is, when we talk about Michaela and Randy, there's actually a lot to say. So got a little thing to say about him, starting with Randy. I mean, his real name is Randolph, but he goes by Randy Allen. He's obviously an exemplar student here at Red Jacket. It's his senior year, and he's also part of the logo or branding committee, as well as National Honor Society and Student Council. He's been a scout for many years and is currently working on his Eagle project in order to gain Eagle Scout status, and he wants to get it done in the next six months. Over the past summer, he had the opportunity to attend Boise State, as well as a week-long engineering camp at RIT. He's been passionate about volunteering in our community for the past seven years, and of course, he's gonna continue to do so like he says. And next year, he plans to apply to either Cornell or RPI to study aerospace mechanical engineering. Michaela Furman, she is also a senior here. And Michaela, you know, talking to her, she's persevered through a lot for her, when she came in, she was with us here at Red Jacket before grades K through eight, and then she went to Pioneer High School in ninth grade, Attica High School in tenth grade. And the way she says it, she's, she said she grew a lot. Like, she took those experiences, she learned from those experiences, and she says that that's what's, her being overcome those obstacles has made her into the person that she is today. She's part of the newspaper club, and also, a proud thing is, she says she never, ever has taken an AP class before, and this year, she's taken three. Next year, she's already planning on going to MCC, where she wants to major in psychology. And she says that she wants to do so because she wants to hop out of the mental health crisis that we have going on right now. And she says that, you know what, I'm gonna be really good at it, because she's been told from her experiences and just how others persevere like she has and where she is today. So Michaela Furman, and Randy Van Alver.
Caleb, Randy, if you could stand up and raise your right hand. You can pull, pull the sheet hands, you can look at them. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Randy Allen, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of New York, of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a student board member.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of student board member.
Of the Manchester Shortsville Central School District, Shortsville, New York, according to the best of my ability.
Of the Manchester Shortsville Central School District, Shortsville, New York, according to the best of my ability.
Welcome. That oath is a mouthful, huh?
Yes.
A couple of quick comments. Both of you, thank you so much for joining us. We began this program last year, and we, your predecessors were excellent as well, and I have no doubt you guys will do the same great service for the board. A neat thing is that Red Jacket's a little bit ahead of the curve here. New York State is beginning to require that school boards adopt policies and start to bring students in, just in this case, as you are, ex officio members of not voting, but of voice nonetheless. So, um, we're a little bit ahead of the curve on that. Um, the voters approved a resolution enabling us to do this, um, in this past cycle. And, uh, so, I mean, I just wanna say, um, you know, thank you to you guys, and also, we know you're busy. And so, um, as you think about how this all works, um, we'd love to have you join us. I know you'll work with, um, the superintendent to prepare some content. We look forward to hearing whatever it is you guys wanna share, your ideas, all those things, but also, no, we don't expect you to be here necessarily at the last minute of the meeting, right? If you, if you're coming in a little late from practice, or you gotta head out because you got a big night, or a performance, or a practice, or a lot of homework, um, we want you to know that that's entirely expected, so, um, you know, plan for that flexibly. But thank you for, for making the effort. Any other thoughts from the group?
Just very excited to have you both, and we had so much fun meeting two student members last year, and we look forward to all your ideas. Don't ever be afraid to use your voice and ask questions and, and be a part of the board, so thanks for volunteering.
Yeah, awesome. Okay, um, so, really quick, before we jump into it, we're gonna approve minutes from prior meetings, um, and then we, we're gonna recognize some of our newer staff. And at that point, if folks want to depart from the meeting, we will not feel bad at all. Of course, we would love for you, oh, we also will have public comment as well immediately after that. We welcome you to stay, and we also want you to feel like you don't have to stay till the end, and you will not be removed by heading out, so, um, thanks to those who joined us. With that, um, we're gonna jump to meeting minutes. All right? So this is, uh, with respect to the September twenty twelfth, twenty twenty four regular meeting. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to educational law, Board of Education approves the September twelfth, twenty twenty four regular Board of Education meeting minutes as presented. Can I get a motion from Chelsea? A second from Amy? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries, very good. Similarly, for the, uh, September twenty sixth work session, uh, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, pursuant to education law, approves the September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four regular Board of Education meeting, uh, minutes as presented. We've got a motion from Chelsea and a second from Scott, thank you very much. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None, very good. All right, well, um, that takes us to, uh, what we'd like to, we're putting together a bit of a, kind of a, a sequence of how we'd like to make sure we pull in folks that are part of the district to recognize, um, in front of, you know, the Board of Education, in front of your peers, uh, new staff, retirees, things like that. Today, I think our goal is to make sure we recognize new staff, so, um, I guess that's, that's me, right? Just make sure I'm clear, okay, very good, okay. Bear with me. Okay, so, with us today, um, and by the way, I'm gonna, well, I'll, I'll mention the folks that are here, and then we have, we're gonna take a quick break, do a little bit of meet and greet, and then, yeah, and we've got some life refreshments over here. We're not gonna take too long, because there's a lot to get through today, but we'd love for you guys to be able to, um, uh, meet and greet a little bit, and then we'll bring it all back together about, uh, ten minutes or so after that. So with us today, we've got Elena Eichmann, physical education, maybe you can just read, yeah, there you go, wait, perfect, love it, thank you for joining us. Abby O'Brien, elementary, awesome, thank you. And we've got Shane Slow from the cleaning staff, very good, and Robbie Slow. All right, you guys, awesome. Well, you know, um, we're gonna talk a little later, for those who wanna stick around, about board, the board goals, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it, but one of our goals was to make sure we're doing recognition. I mean, it's one of many of our goals, but where, where can the board do recognition in a really meaningful way? And we, we try to bring more people into these meetings to hear what's going on, we record and we put that stuff out there, and one of the awesome ways we think we can do that is to make sure that folks are required, but are at least invited to come join us, so that we can just directly share with you how much we appreciate, um, you know, becoming part of the, the Red Jacket family. So, uh, to Elena, Abby, Shane, and Robbie, and actually, I should mention one more, we have, uh, coming up, soon to be official, um, uh, it's Jennifer Peterson here as well. All right, Jennifer, awesome. So, so we're gonna count on the fact that this is all gonna be just right here in a while, and we would like to celebrate you tonight as well, even though we'll probably come back around the other next time we do this kind of thing, so. So for Elena, Abby, Shane, Robbie, and Jennifer, get a round of applause. We're gonna take a brief recess for about ten minutes or so, come grab some cookies, bottle of water, and then we're gonna reconvene. All right, thank you all very much for the first official new staff celebration. Uh, I think that was quite well, some things have gone, and it was great to meet some of you and some of you that have, so, perfect. Looks like we got a couple of folks for public comment, so we'll go ahead and move into that. Really quickly, I'm just gonna, as a matter of practice, walk through kind of the standard, code of conduct, if you will, for, um, public comment. So, the expectations are as follows. Speaker should address the board president, all remarks should be addressed to the board as a body, not a new member, uh, direct all comments to issues, um, not, not specific people, um, just feel free to disagree, but we expect everyone to be respectful. Two minutes is a lot of, additional written comments can be left with the board clerk. And that's the gist of it, I think we're all know what we're supposed to do here, and, uh, we look forward to hearing from those, uh, on the list, and it looks like Mr. Snack one is up first.
All right, so I'm here not because I wanna address an issue, but I'm here on behalf of the Twin Cities Holiday Basket Program. Um, the committee is myself, Sarah Huber, Lori Ryan, and Andrea Record. We talked as a committee last year that we just kinda wanted to build more awareness for the program. So what we do, it's all volunteer-led, community-supported, um, different organizations, businesses, churches, the school, um, provide two holiday meal baskets for families in need, and then give support children under sixteen. So last year, we had seventy-four families, a hundred, over a hundred kids. We do two distribution days, so everything comes in, we organize it, we inventory it, and then we give it out to the families all within a few hours. So, um, we wanted to, I guess, build the awareness at the school, because we know our staff works with the kids and the families, and they could help their best if they felt like there were families that we were missing. So I spoke at the vaccine meetings, and I just wanted to bring it to you guys too, just so you guys were aware of the program. If you feel like there are families that you're unsure if we're reaching, or you have families that you think would like to help support the program, um, we have an email address, and Chris has it, Jeff has it, everyone has it, on Twin Cities HPT at Gmail, but feel free to reach out if you have any questions, or you can just help us with work, we appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Amanda, and I think that program's pretty, um, pretty well-known in the community, and thank you for coming to talk to us, and if there is something the district can do to help, I hope you'll connect with Superintendent Bernard and make sure we know about it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Jim Lynch?
I'd be elbowed, not the disability number, of course. So, as you may remember, that's my name, Chip Lynch, um, class of eighty-nine. I just came, I've been thinking about this for a few months. What I wanted to do, you don't know me, you don't know me, I've been a nurse for almost thirty years, I've been a nurse practitioner about half that time, I've taught most of the last fifteen years nursing programs, and you had mentioned you had a curve here at Red Jacket. And my daughter-in-law's school in Houston, the school district, is in Texas, you know, and they have a thing called the magnet program, which is where an individual's school is saying, we're gonna be really good at this, and it could be anything, it could be band or language, my daughter went to the gymnastics magnet program, and essentially, it's where anybody in the district can do that if you feel like that's what you're gonna wanna do. So I came here today to say that I feel like, or I'd be willing to help develop, I don't know what to call it, we could call it a nursing program, or a pre-medicine program, or medicine program, or some program, where we can kind of focus students towards a, a program like that. If you don't know, there's been a nursing shortage essentially for the last thirty years, I'm in a special situation right now, but the nurses that I've worked with are making forty or fifty dollars an hour, and if you could graduate students and say, you know what, we're pretty confident you're gonna make eighty thousand dollars a year, you know, you're setting them up in a pretty good situation. So I don't think this is a short project, and I don't think it's something that'll come easy, and I mean, I hope it's a possible, but what I'm saying is that I have expertise in youth nursing education, I have an expertise in medicine, um, and I'd be happy to share that to develop a program, I mean, I'd even teach it if you wanted me to go through it. I think the beauty of it is nursing and medicine can be very basic, and we can develop very simple things, like bones and blood, we can make it very complicated and get into chemistry type things, so what it would require is somebody that has knowledge to do it, or people who have knowledge to do it, and then, um, you have to develop students that would be mature, because you're putting them in a position, you don't wanna, you know, somebody that's able to handle both situations, issues of family issues, and blood issues, things like that. So, um, I think it's a really, I think it's a really good idea, um, like I said, I'd be happy to, if you're part of a group that identifies it, if that's something you wanna do over the family, and, uh, if you want my number, I'm sure somebody can find you if you need it.
If, let's make sure, yeah, I'll grab, grab, you know, I'll get, okay, let's make sure to grab, reach out. So, sorry, did you go on?
No.
Okay. What I'll say is, uh, man, I, I won't respond in full, but I really appreciate you taking the time to come in, to come in, and I think it's a really neat idea. I know we do work with other programs outside of the school to help get our students that type of exposure, I have no idea whether there's an opportunity to, um, further augment how we help Red Jacket students get that sort of experience, but I think it would be great if you'd be willing to talk with Superintendent Bernard, and he can be, he'd be the best to, I'm, I'm sure if we, if there's something that emerges out of that, they can help our students, that the board would wanna hear about it, so we would look forward to that.
And then I could, I mean, we could make a program where you could, with a college of, say, Saint John Fisher Program, you do that, somebody went through the redneck program, and they can be like, hey, we'll promise them they can do the program, I do programs in Texas that are like that, you finish this program, you're automatically accepted at the next level, so, I can work with a team of people, so you could, you could do those programs.
Fair, fair enough. Okay, well, thank you very much, and I, I hope we can provide some, you know, meaningful follow-up, so, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, that concludes our public comment. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great, okay, so this takes us to, uh, presentations, and so we've got elementary building council?
Sure.
I was just gonna say it. Before you guys, I just, I wanna link out, so, um, Randy's got a commitment, so if he gets something, he heads out, just don't be offended, we're gonna, we already, we give him the, uh, go ahead and cover.
You have the green light, you can do whatever you gotta go with. So a little bit, as, as being a sub building council, it's not really building council, but what we're here to talk about ties directly to our building council goals. Obviously, we presented the building council to you last month, so, quick little update, really just directly related to building council. If you're free next Thursday night, it's Fall Festival out back, or that's our first family engagement event, so if you can join us, uh, next Thursday night, we will be out back with a bunch of different folks from town, uh, there's gonna be games and prizes and all sorts of things for the kids to do, so.
Sadly, we have a work session planned, I think, for next Thursday, but I'm gonna do my best to go there.
I was gonna say, just sneak out and check out the, the Fall Festival.
Maybe that'll be part of the work session, it would be.
Free for everybody to see you there as a group, you can maybe come out. If you want your brain.
Before the work session. You're starting before the work session.
Oh, what time is your work session? Six, well, if you can get out there and you wanna bring an egg, we're doing the egg drop again, so if you wanna do the egg drop competition and see if your egg will survive being dropped off the school, uh, bring in a little contraption and we'll drop it off the report. But I promised to go quick tonight, but it does tie to our building council goals, because what we're talking about with letters training does tie directly to our academic goal, uh, all of our academic goals, but also, for me, it really ties into our culture goal. So when Chris and I met and we sort of talked about what I was gonna be, uh, presenting on tonight as far as an elementary school update, one of the overwhelming things that I continued to hear at the start of the year, and I heard it directly from Elaine, and I heard it come from Lisa's mouth, and not just those two, uh, but just about the follow-through from our training in letters last year. So I'm gonna take you back to a little historical perspective of where we've gotten to, but it really has begun to build a culture in my building, uh, that is just as important, in my opinion, to playing games and having fun activities that we do on, you know, we did a super intense conference day activity last week, and we can continue to do those things, but when you hear teachers talking about this, and they're talking about it unprompted, I think it, it speaks to the culture that we're building here in the district as well. So, uh, real quick, I think they're probably pretty familiar faces, but, uh, I do have Elaine Anderson here with me, um, she is not old by any stretch of the imagination, we talk about this all the time, she is my most senior elementary school teacher, and I think she provides a great perspective for us, for somebody that's been here and been through the iterations, uh, and it's a great culture, because Elaine and I can say that for each other. And we also have Lisa Whipple, who is a parent, uh, who also brings a different perspective, having come from another district and come here as well, uh, to sort of talk about what we're doing and how, just like Amanda and Mr. Lynch were talking about doing things that I think are ahead of the curve, and having our student council reps, I really do believe that we're ahead of the curve in the region with what we're doing, uh, and having gone through this training. So, I'm gonna give a really quick, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the start of the show, we're gonna do a quick literacy journey for us, that's my piece, Elaine and Lisa are gonna talk to you about, uh, celebrating where we are and how we are serving all of our students. So, real quick, and if you've been on the board for a while, some of this might be a quick repeat to you, um, but where it all began, our first step, uh, was that we had to look at our actual resources that we're, we were using. So a number of years ago, honestly, COVID time, a little pre-COVID, we started, uh, you know, like curriculum review process here in the elementary school, uh, I won't read the slides, you're welcome to read it, but we essentially looked at a number of programs, went through an extensive year and a half process of looking at different programs with a committee of teachers, before we came to settle on what I refer to as a primary resource for us, because it's not a Bible, we don't pick it up and teach it like it's a Bible, it is a primary resource that we use, and that is the collaborative classroom suite, which, if you hear being a reader, being a writer, making, that's what we're talking about. It also ties, and one of the big selling pieces for us was that it has an intervention component that directly ties to it, which is the SIPs program, uh, that Lisa will use along with some other program when she can speak to that. Then, we went in and we said, how are we gonna know if the program is effective? So we started to develop, and Mr. George and Mrs. Bieber and I have come in and talked to you about our EWI charts, and how we're tracking student data, uh, and we looked, and we began to analyze the program and say, is, where are the program gaps? We knew there were going to be gaps after we started using the program, uh, and some of that was done through our assessments. That led us to beginning to look at that we knew we needed some more work in our foundational skills, our small group instruction, and that is where we brought in, if you've, if you're familiar, Dr. David Kilpatrick came and presented to us, maybe, three years ago? Dr. Kilpatrick also introduced us to Dr. Pam Castner, who came and did some PD, and they sort of laid the groundwork for us with the science of reading, and really gave us the push towards letters training. The letters training came in two waves, one, Lisa was part of our first wave, uh, so there was a group of six core teachers that went through letters training, and they remained sort of mentor teachers. Last year, the rest of, we had forty, uh, staff members that went through letters training, um, here at the elementary school, it also included some of the middle and high school special education teachers, uh, and we now, Abby O'Brien, who's sitting here today, I think has been through two of her four days of training, so she's halfway through letters training. And I think that's important, because for the teachers and for us, it's a commitment that we're going to continue down this path. It's not a one-and-done training, it's not something that the teachers are just gonna get that we're here that year, we're gonna continue to train teachers. And what is really pushing, and Lisa's one of the biggest proponents, is we have a lot of teachers now that are asking for volume two, uh, of letters training. We won't go too deep into what, uh, volume two is, it's really more of a upper elementary, middle, high school comprehension piece, so we're starting to look at, I, I'm not positive, I don't wanna put anybody on the spot over here to say, but do we have some people doing letters too?
We do.
Essentially? I thought so.
We do.
Uh, so we have a handful of people, but we have people clamoring for it. When you think about letters training, you think that it's four days, plus there's all of forty hours of work that needs to be done outside of those four days of training, for people to be asking to do more of it, uh, is pretty astonishing. I think it speaks to the training. The biggest thing for letters with me, that I think, somebody that may not be in education, and it's different than a lot of trainings you go to, is they're not selling you any materials, like, you get one book, you get your manual, and you get trained. You're, there is no ongoing after that necessarily, you need to buy these consumable books from us, and we hold them, you need to pay us money. This is truly an investment in the people that we have here, uh, and there's not any cost that then goes on beyond that. And so, I think that the teachers are seeing, this is truly us putting an investment in them, and it's great to see when we come back, and I think, it was Chris and I that were walking through Elaine's room in the first week, and unprompted, we were just sort of doing our morning walkthroughs and hate kids, and, you know, she was talking, she just made a quick comment to us that was like, the kids have never come to me in first grade like this, prepared like this, and coming from someone like Elaine, the, how many years Elaine?
This is the middle of thirty-one.
Thirty-one years of experience here, to say, yes, congratulations, wow, thirty-one years, but to be able to say that in thirty-one years of kids, they are coming from our kindergarten classrooms last year and walking into our first grade classrooms are more advanced and better prepared than they've ever been, we feel like it's a direct correlation to this. And really, for me, it's an update for you, but it should be a celebration of these folks and the rest of the people in my building, for me, that have put the work in, because they're the ones doing it every day, they were the ones that committed to the training last year and put the work in, and continue to put the work in, so, to me, it's a celebration of that tonight, so.
Thank you.
And I'm done, so I don't know if anybody had a stopwatch on you over there, but I was not fifteen minutes.
Probably counted down long ago, but.
So, I'm not gonna read from the slide either, and interestingly, Jeff and I picked the same Xanax graphic, but when, I have been here a couple of years, um, when I was started in kindergarten, twenty-eight years ago, um, you know, we've gone through, we started with a color day, or a color week, you know, the letter of the week, and where we are now is light years ahead of that, uh, and, and, you know, some of us thought, oh, that'll never be possible, because developmentally and all those factors that go into teaching little people especially, there are a lot of things to consider. Well, here we are, and, you know, I sometimes can say, when we got all this information, at first I looked at that and I went, oh my gosh, this is incre- this is crazy, but those, all of those descriptors are things that go into being a reader, and in prior programs, we were not taught that, and, you know, I'm looking at myself, who has been out of college for a few years, but I took three classes in reading in college, I took two in graduate school. I don't feel that qualified me to do all that, and listening to some of the things, I've listened to some podcasts and read some books, and what we were using previously was not scientifically based, and so, there was one particular podcast that, if you don't remember the name of it, I'll tell you, but, um, it made me sick to my stomach that I was teaching that way, because I was not giving the kids tools to be lifelong readers, I was giving them the tools to look at a picture. Well, you look at a picture when you're five or six, you might be able to get some meaning from that picture when you're five or six, but when you're twelve, there aren't any pictures anymore. You don't have the foundational skills to help you read, because you don't have any pictures, and so kids didn't like reading, they didn't want to read, well, now we're giving them the tools, and so, when we look at, um, what the kids are doing, and we talk about phonics, and it was all that whole, um, whole language versus, you know, that whole debate, there are a lot, there were definitely very strong opinions, but I am, after what I've learned through this, phonics is necessary, how can you look at a word and understand its meaning if you don't have an understanding of phonics, if you don't know what letter sounds are, if you don't know, and the, and the big deal, like I was saying to, to Chris and Jeff, is when they came in this year, these, these kids all knew all their letters, and they knew all their letter sounds in first, at the beginning of first grade. I remember years where, and I've been in first grade nine years now, years where I had a group of seven kids that didn't know the alphabet yet, so it's huge, because if you have to teach just what the letter looks like first, and then teach the sounds, it, it can really slow down progress, first grade's a really important year for teaching reading, so anyway, can you be my clicker?
Yep, I certainly.
Thank you. Um, I'm not gonna read all that, because I will trip over it, but there is a difference between phonemic awareness and phonological awareness, and we're gonna give you some examples. I don't like to stand up in front of people that are above this high, um, and talk, so we took, we, we're taking you into the classroom, I did some videos for you of what the kids are doing, um, I think we're gonna give you two examples of phonemic awareness and two examples of phonological awareness.
Next slide.
Yep, please. And the first one, I think, is quiet.
This one?
But, yep. Yes, this is the quiet one, Mrs. Hemlin was quiet. So these are all first graders in all four videos.
You ready? You ready?
Can you hear me?
Continue right there. It's kinda hard back there.
Let's take one of those words, ready? We said, "act" for cat. What if we did, "s" at for sex? They both end with? Good. There we go. Say "that." What word would run "that"? "Cat." Or what? Let's try "fat." Somebody said "that." Give me the first sound. "Act." How about? "That." They both end with? "At." So, they both run. Let's try this one. She has visual symbols for some of her kids. I'm not sure what that all means. First sound. First sound. "Ostrich." So, she, so she did a rhyming piece and then she did an isolate in her first sound. So, that's just one of the lessons. We do a phonics, we do two phonics lessons every day in first grade. And so, that's just one example. And then, the second one is Mrs. Stein's class, and her kids crack me up the way they do this. They're very, very regimented about their routines. "Cold." Last sound. Say "ramp." Last sound. Say "task." Last sound. Say "fact." Last sound. Say "lawn." Last sound. So, these exercises are all without anything in front of them. They, that's helping get their, their brains mapping where the sounds fall in words so that when they look at the words, they're not bogged down by that. In the next slide, you'll see some of my students demonstrating how we do it with the hands-on approach. Oh, and I apologize, there is some comic relief in the middle. Because it's first grade and it's unscripted, there is a toilet flush in the middle of one of the videos. The next word is "mat." This is called orthographic mapping. Blend it. Nice. What's your root? Fix that A phonics. What does it need to be?
"Magixi."
"Magixi." Oops, don't go back around it. Magixi go up, pull down. It's first grade. What's your root? And then the last video is a different group, which is doing a little more difficult activity. And, and I was really, they were not prompted. So, this is, because this is the routine we do every day, they, they were not told what they had to say in this video. That's, that's why you gotta toilet flush, because it's, it's raw and unfiltered, unedited. What I'm gonna give you might be a little bit tricky. The next word is a di- has a digraph in it. So, what's a digraph? Right. So, the next word is "rack." So, they all know what a digraph is. I didn't know what a digraph was five years ago. You know, so they know, they know why that happens. They also know some little tricks. I'm gonna give them one of the tricks that we talked about. We don't have to do that yet. But, so, my kids, if you ask them, "Why do you have an E at the end of a word like 'give'?" Does anybody know the answer to that? Because it should be a long I, shouldn't it? If you're, if you're, if you're reading it, it should say "guide", because no word in the English language ends with V. That's why there's neither. But my kids all know that, all the first graders know that. You also have DGE instead of J, because no word in the English language ends with J. Now, names are an exception, and there are historic, there are things that happen because of different cultures and languages that play into our language, obviously. But they know those rules when they leave first grade, and that really sets them up. We talk about suffixes and prefixes, and they really are set up to be language learners. They learn about their own language to be able to read it. Do you wanna do your thing? Do you wanna do this thing? I can do whatever. Okay. All right, it's your turn. And I gotta peel this out because I wanted to.
All these ones where they put us on the screen.
The first one I'll do with, I'll do while Lisa's passing out stuff. So, I brought my, so we, we do supplement to our letters with the HARRY program, and the HARRY program has really good skill and drill practice for the kids. So, say the word "bell." Not change the "b" to "t." So, they do that, we go through a list of words every day where they have to substitute either the beginning sound, sometimes the middle sound, sometimes the ending sound. My kids would also go, "Oh, it's got two L's, it's the Floss rule." That means that, so we're learning, we learn specifically explicit instruction in why things are the way they are. And I know, growing up, I didn't ever know that. I was just taught this is what it is and learn it. So, now they're teaching them why it is, and, and they really are very interested in it, too. These boards are like the boards that my students were using. And I, I say my students, but we're all in the land. I'm just referring to what my home base is.
Do we sell these at home, sure?
No.
Can we sell these?
I don't know. I don't. You know what? I tell parents that they can do it pretty simply. I have pockets in my classroom, you know, those little, you know. So, it was a fidget thing for kids, it was really big a few years back, and they're about this big, and you can buy them for a dollar, sure. And that's, I actually pass them out at writing time for my kids. So, they wanna, like today, one of my kids wanted to write "plant", and I said, "Okay, let's tap out each sound." And she popped in these little, they're little silicone things, and you pop in the bubbles. And she, so then she could take that letter, give the sound, and match it to where it was in the word. And she could go back through her pocket and match it with her finger, and she got all the sounds on the letter. So, it can be as simple as that, that they could have something, you know, pretty generic to do it with.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if you had something that the grandparents and the parents would use at home to read the course, what are you gonna do?
And we, we send out a thing, a form. Now, oh, callers, you get what you get, you know, throw a fit. That's what we say. First grade. I blossom. Really? Not my first rodeo.
All right, do you have anything more you wanna?
Do you go, do I give them word?
I'll give them, yeah, I'll give them some words here. Okay, so, one of the, first of all, I use a program that is just, it's like their program, it's made by the same company, but it's for struggling learners. So, if, if the first tier isn't effective, they can come to me and they get a little bit more broken down with pieces that are meant, meant for slow pace, but at the same time, still moving forward. I'm actually K by reading.
So, she's a reading interventionist. So, if you're struggling in the classroom and you're identified from that EWI data that we've shown you those charts, that's what Lisa and the other interventionists are using to determine who are they gonna pick up for extra help. One of the programs that they use SIPs is tied to our core resource. They also use, Wilson, I don't wanna speak for you, Lisa.
Wilson, Rewards, Challenge. Challenge is part of SIPs, but Rewards is different.
And another program, but they're all reading intervention programs.
Basically, we're, we've gotten a lot better at knowing, seeing what kids can do, figuring out what they still need, and then giving them what they need.
The one thing I'll point out, Lisa, before you jump in it, they use all, a lot, all of the teachers, it's not just Elaine that's using these boards. Like, you'll see them in our intervention classrooms, you'll see them in kindergarten and first grade. I don't know if we're defining what SIPs is.
Now, this has a little picture of it, of a clock on it. I could have the kids stick a clock on here. I'm just gonna show you one of the things that we could use. But I'm gonna do something a little bit different with you. We have at least one person here with a regularly phonetic name, Mrs. Spears. And we have one person here who does not have a regular phonetic name. And Elaine was actually like, "Oh, you can't do that one, it's German derivative." And by the way, her first grade students would be able to tell me that that's a German derivative term.
By the end of the year, yes.
Likely, yeah.
And it spelled wrong.
Oh, is it spelled wrong right here?
No, no. The way we spell it is actually not the German one.
Oh, okay, that's good enough to check in with that lady. Okay, so you saw her students repeat sound and then spell, so I'll kind of walk you through this. So, let's start with a phonetically regular word. So, they're reading along, they're reading about the board meeting, grade board meeting, and it has this person named Mrs., hmm, I don't know how to pronounce that. Well, let's sound it. Spears. So, when we sound Spears, we start with the first sound, and you'll move your little circle up to the first grade. So, s. E. R. So, we have five sounds in that word. So, we need to now decide, what says? And you gotta shout it out to me.
Oh, it sounds like an S right there.
Yeah.
You're cheating with your head.
Yeah. Okay, so you would just move your, I would tell kids, just keep moving them up. You would move your circle up, put an S. So, we have s. What says?
P.
P. And I should add in here, too, that you have folders in front of you that I use with the kids if they're not sure what says, you know, they can go. Yeah, they would look, kind of, so, and they can look on the inside. We have our vowel valley. We have this actually, the valley, we have our vowels on the valley end, our, I'm sorry, I just remember.
I mean, I need it, but you know.
We have our consonants on this side. They just look at the way their mouth is forming it. Oh, I see the sound. And I can even have them right there, right on here with a dry grease marker that that's up eating that sound.
And all the primary classrooms have sound walls with the vowels up there, too, with the pictures of the formation. And we spend time with mirrors and things so the kids can look at how their mouth looks when they make the sound.
So, the blue ones are short vowel folders. So, those would go typically to our K1. But I will say, when I started here, and I told Jeff this, this is why I'm impressed with what we're doing, when I started here, our fourth graders were starting on those blue folders. Now, our blue folder, folders are K1, maybe two, third grades out of them by now. They're on the purple folders, which has our long vowels. And that's what we want. I have to put myself on the job, right? If I don't put myself on the job, I'm doing a bad job. So, don't worry. So, we have.
They might take us the wrong direction.
I'm not forced. So, we have s. Now, we have e. There's many ways we could spell e, and if you're, by, by the time we're doing this word, you'd be in the purple folder. And you would notice under the long e, there's ea, ee. So, we'd have to make choices. They might write it right on their folder, the choices, and then we'd have to decide. For the sake of time, I'm just gonna tell you, it's ea, right, Jeff? No, just kidding. Okay, so you write your ee in there, keep our dots going up. So, we have s. E. What's next? R. What says r? R. And then our last, Spears. S. Okay, and there you would have your name. And then I would have them like right below, maybe we'd use them in a sentence, depending on what we were doing with that lesson. And now, because I'm so excited to do that one from last.
I told her she had to do this when she brought it.
I sometimes have to remember from spelling bands name correctly.
I feel like if you're not from short spell, you see the e on the internet and you're like, eh, what's that?
Shurgle like turtle.
Okay, so let's pull those back down. Now, we would, some of the things I'm not gonna remember, I'm gonna do, you know, like repeat. So, I'm not gonna have you repeat shurgle, but you would repeat shurgle, okay, shurgle. How many sounds we'd sound it out? So, first sound in shurgle? Second sound? R. Third sound? Last sound? Okay, so four sounds, a lot of letters, four sounds. And that's one of the things a word like "though" has two sounds. Oh, but a lot of letters. So, this is something that really helps the kids kind of encapsulate a sound can be four letters. In this case, it will be four letters, but, so shh. How would we typically spell shh?
SH.
SH. So, in this word, it is, it's different, because we would tell the kids, "It's German derivative." So, this is one that we're just gonna have to know. Sometimes we're gonna come across words that come from other languages. So, let's go ahead and write S. CH, my pen is not working very well, so you have to.
They're brand new.
This one I grabbed from my bag. I should have grabbed one of yours. Actually, I'm gonna grab one of theirs.
Went on Amazon Fall Prime Days and bought my, it was just for the lack of discipline.
My grandma's about to, it's right about time. So, it's a little messy, because my pen was not working very well, but S, C, H. What's the next sound? So, first sound, shh, next sound. And if you look in your purple folder, which you don't have to do, I'll just tell you, but you would notice that r is IR, ER, and UAR. And the kids might even write that down here, these are their options. And then I'll have to explain. Again, this is a word that might be integrated in our language from a foreign, you know, from a foreign source. So, we're gonna do, I have something to do, you know, like, A, E, R. So, we have three letters for r rather than our typical English two letters. So, so far, we have two parts that we need to just kind of remember, that sometimes in a foreign language, you might have these two parts that we need to memorize by heart. And then shur, and then what's the third sound? How do we spell t? And so, I've got the kids write the t. And then the last sound, must be another cleaner, so it's not second. Last sound. O. Now, in English, the kids learn, O at the end of a word has to be le. In this word, it's just l. So, you, Mr. Shurgle, have four sounds, and three of them, we have to memorize. So, that's what. But anyway, this is fun for the kids to really pull these apart, they get to be word detectives. I came from the Mount Leipziger School District, and they were slowly moving into the sense of reading. Red Jacket was going full speed ahead, and I was like, "Yes, this is my place." And these kids are already much further along than they were when I started three years ago because of this training that we did. So, I just thought you might wanna see the folders, see how we're giving them their options. And then these, I'll come, actually, I'll come around in a second. Do you have any questions about this part? Sorry, it took a little bit longer.
I have a question for you, I have something you just said. I was wondering in your mind, what makes the difference between moving slow, moving fast? Is that a professional development thing for the staff? Or is it more about the students, or is it just the combination of things?
Perfect segue.
Oh, sorry, am I gonna have to?
No, that was actually the perfect segue. So, because of this training, because of our experience, we can now gauge, this is what I hear a lot now. I didn't hear this when I first started at Red Jacket, and I certainly didn't hear it a ton at my old school in some meetings. I observed, and you know what? I know from my training, so therefore, this student probably needs or I need to incorporate. We might need to incorporate some nonsense words, because a kid is doing flawlessly, but then their reading, and they can't, it all falls apart. We give them some nonsense words that they don't have memorized. They have a serious violence issue that we didn't catch, you know? Or perhaps it's higher up on the ladder, and they're reading close, see they're falling apart, and we have some comprehension issues that we need to catch. So, we've become a lot more diagnostic. So we've become a lot more diagnostic, prescriptive, um, as a field, and especially at Red Jacket. Because my kids did go from Red Jacket, go to Red Jacket, I go to a meeting, great teachers, but they'd say they're reading a level A, and I'd say, but what can they do? Like, I don't, how do you know what that means, what's, what's that mean, what can they do? So now we can speak in terms of, oh, they're having trouble with their double vowels, they're having trouble with their endings. And then, um, we just use our box curriculum as our big stamp, and then we can use our training to fill in the holes. Because like Jeff likes to say, if there was a perfect box curriculum, every single school district would be using the same one, so.
Were you asking about, about schools going faster and slower, or were you asking about our progress, the, within?
Yeah, I see, well, you do a comparison, say, hey, I was at a bigger district, and they were slowly inching into it, and here we were going pretty fast.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
No, that's okay, it was still good, good info, but I, I guess, yeah, I was just looking to, like, what, what makes the difference there, in your opinion? Is it, because I know we've invested in the training, and is that, is that the key, or are there other things that we're not thinking about better?
In my view, and this is just my opinion, it's a lot more people, it's harder to move a lot more people in one direction. It's not a exaggeration to say we had meetings where teachers were crying, like, this is not how I've been taught for thirty years, this is not. And I can pull, I still have my graduate notebook from, from, like, I don't wanna say the college on that, but, um, and the first thing it says, how to teach decoding, look at the pictures, number one, look at pictures.
Because we're fundamentally changing how people are doing their jobs every day.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, and, and the way I look at it too, not only is it moving a lot of people, but, but the district made a commitment to training all of us at the same time. So we all were, we were all in it together, you know, and I think had it been, oh, let's have one person from each grade level go, or this or that, it wouldn't have been the same experience. Because we all have different strengths that we bring to what we're doing, and, and weaknesses, and so we can lean on each other, and we can help each other out. And I think that's the beauty of a small district too, um, but I think because, because we invested, everybody's so heavily into it. I'm skeptical, I'll admit it, at the beginning, I remember a younger teacher coming to me a few years before, saying, we need this, we need this, we need this, and I said, I'm gonna talk to you in a motherly way. Don't go at everybody and tell them what they need. You need to, you know, we need to research, we need to prove what we've got, don't throw away the baby in the bath waters. Don't, don't go down that road until you've listened to what other people have done. And I really should go back to that teacher who has moved on to a different district and say, I'm sorry, you were right. Because we did change approaches three sixty, but it was fantastic, it's like one of the best, it is the best training I've been through in my career.
Do we have any, um, anybody trained for turnkey, for many teachers, any of you guys trained?
No, we don't have a person.
We just did that in our district, we have all, uh, we also have letters training, and, but now we have two teachers who are actually training the trainer. So that might be another avenue to sort of, I mean, you guys have agreed at that, get that additional training.
And at this point, we figured like SBOC's, it, because this is a, a, a regional approach, a statewide approach to levels science of reading. SBOC's is offering letters one and letters two as ongoing trainings going forward. So what, what Abby O'Brien is doing, she's over at WFL, what, um, Sonya is our new sixth grade specialist teacher, she's taking it through WFL. So it's, we're taking advantage of it in that way at this point, and we, so we have some second, I think, four secondary folks that are either doing letters one or letters two training currently, um, in, in twenty four, twenty five.
Yeah.
So, and it, that, that's our commitment, is if we hire a new elementary teacher, the expectation is they're gonna go through that training, do the, the forty hours of additional work along with it. So that we maintain that the elementary, everybody is in that group.
So for me, to just sort of wrap up, like, I'm excited because they're excited, and they're excited, I think, because they see the difference it's making for kids, uh, they see the value in what we've done. Uh, and, you know, no, it's not building council, but it does build a good culture, uh, which is what we're all.
That's just what it said in here, Jeff, that's all I was going up.
I'm not, I'm building.
This is much more than just building council, anyway.
But, but.
I'll look down for the next.
And, well, no, it was, it was supposed to be building council, Chris and I talked about it, it was really hard, it's not gonna be much that's happened from September to October. It does talk about culture though, and, and when people feel good about what they're doing, and they feel confident in what they're doing, and they see results in kids, and they see the commitment from the district, and that everybody's on the saving page. Like, that's what builds a good culture, so, it's not just games and playing to win it.
The tools, are you using those just in first grade, or are you using those multiple grade?
I have, um, for our fifth graders who still need it, and, and our goal is obviously by the time they're at fourth grade, fifth grade, they should be in the comprehension realm.
Sure.
We're not quite there yet, but we're getting much closer, but they'll have something a little more, um, age appropriate.
Do you use something like that for mathematics as well, where the teacher can say, what's two, two, they just write it down and flash the number?
Oh, they have, yeah, they have dry erase boards that are used to.
We have, so, I have board, first grade, I can only speak to first grade, other grades might have this too, I don't know. We have paddles that are very similar, or we, boards are very similar, they're, they don't have a handle, and they have the tense, they have tense frames in them. So on one side, they have, they have two tense frames, and on the other side, they have what's called a matnum, or a number bond, it's got a box, and then the two down below. So we do a lot of work on those, and we use basically the same, the same chips, the magnet chips to show, to, so you can flip, they're two sided. And you can say, okay, three reds plus two yellows is five, and then they can show it over here, that they put three on one side and two on the other, and so.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah, because hands on is so important for the little ones.
Yeah, I, I know my, my brother was doing something similar in physics, where instead of everybody checking everybody's formulas, they would write on a dry paper, and they would just flip up, and so he can just, okay, you all know what, or we need help.
Yeah. These, they, yeah, my kids, when we do phonics, they just, they, they hold them up, they hold them up in the air, they have their chips, and they hold them up in the air, and they wave them over, and they're trying to. Get people on the hat, and.
That's always how we take the old swans.
But, um, but it's really, they love, and they, they enjoy it, like, I thought originally this was gonna be really dry, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm very primary, I really love my littles, and they love it. They love it, they get so excited to show me what they know, like a diagram piece where she could tell that two letters, I did not prompt her. So, you know, they, they get so excited that they know this stuff, and I tell them, oh, and tell your girls, help, help smart out, so that they can practice learning it, you know?
All right, um, any further questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much, that was more than the average presentation, but it was really, it was awesome. I never know what to expect, and we're gonna get an interactive, uh, activity, but that was, that was actually pretty fun, and thank you for sharing with us, and thank you for all the number space.
For coming.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for coming today. Um, we don't have a whole lot left, but, uh, feel free to duck out, if you'd like. All right, you guys, uh, I think we're gonna move on. To, okay, so, yep, so Superintendent Bernard is gonna share briefly about his professional learning experience.
All right, so, good evening, everybody, and as, uh, this, uh, Jamie pointed out, my goal tonight is to talk a little bit about my experience this summer, which I touched base, uh, briefly with the board, um, and shared my gratitude to the board for supporting this opportunity. Um, but I've been working through, uh, a layer, and different layers of presenting to different aspects of our school and community. Um, I opened our opening days for those, uh, board members who were able to attend, heavily invested in this conversation with, um, our school staff. Um, and I'm tying that into today, so very familiar, or very similar to what I did on opening days, I'm gonna share with you all today, and then as I wrap up, I'm gonna share with you some of my next steps. Um, in sharing this work, but also how it directly connects to our district, the work that we're doing, but also how we might move forward as a district. So this summer, I, as I shared with the board, I was offered a tremendous opportunity through NISCS, the New York State Council of School Superintendents. Um, where I had to go through an application process last fall and winter, um, to apply to be, uh, selected as one of five superintendents in New York State. Who had the chance to travel with the New York State Council of Superintendents, along with a company called Education First, who I'm gonna share at the end. And we went on a tour over two weeks of Japan and Korea. Um, and I just have to say, for me, it was so eye opening, from an educational standpoint, and from a cultural standpoint. And I learned a lot about different pieces that I think that we could bring back to our school community, um, that not necessarily, when I was new to it, I was thinking it would be heavy, what can we do educationally, which I'm gonna share here. It's more what I think we can do, um, with our approaches, our values, and some of the things that, um, we can look at holistically. So you've heard me talk about this since I came in literally from April and May of two thousand twenty three. I'm a firm believer that the most important thing that we do is that we create an LLC, and that's not the business standpoint, that's those three terms, that we are listeners, that we learn, and that we connect together every single day. I talk about this with the staff consistently, about this is the most important thing that we do, we listen to each other, we listen to our families, we listen to our kids. We learn from each other, and we are learners every day as adults, and we model that, and we connect. This learning tour magnified that for me, I talked about it, I felt like I lived it, but this opportunity to be in this time for over two weeks with such a variety of folks, really just hammered home this for me even more. So let me talk to you quickly first on, what did I notice differently in our educational systems between Japan and Korea, and how we are currently doing things in the United States? Number one, one of the biggest items that I had is a takeaway, and this presentation is another presentation too, I've shared with multiple members of, uh, the other superintendents that were on the tour with me. Because there was five from New York State, and then there was another seventeen from across the country, so there was almost twenty five of us total. And we shared these ideas, and these were kind of our big takeaways, and I'll show you a picture in a moment about some of the time that we had together as adults to learn. But the big things I wanna share with the, with the board and with the community are respect for education and educators. Um, education is highly valued, and what I mean by that is that it's held, held at the highest regard, teachers are supported by families, not questioned by families. Their, the number one priority is education, academic achievement for all students, and their firm belief that education is the path to newer, different opportunities, and families will go to no end to make sure that that's there for their, their, their students. So a very specific feeling about education and their culture and their values, and then this idea of collectivism versus individualism. Currently, what you'll see in New York State is that we're doing a path, we, we have pathways that we're designing that are specific to different students, right? The portrait of a graduate, and all of these things are very specific to our different types of learners. And I wanna be clear, I'm not saying here what's right or wrong, I'm just telling you the difference. And in Japan and Korea, it's much more in a route of, um, the system does not easily adjust, or does not change as much on the basis of students. So there's not a lot of conversations around IEDs, or there's not a lot of conversations around SEL and mental health, they're very focused on content and academic achievement. Regular schedule, just some examples of this, many, most schools, public and private, go year round, limited breaks, longer hours, extended days. So the one teacher that, that did a tour with us, her daughter was, I believe, two years from graduation from their high school. She was, she would go to school till four o'clock every day, come home for two hours, and then they would meet in the libraries many times with their teacher from six to ten at night. She can't drive, so her parents were driving her back and forth. So they have these extended days, and they're highly focused on aspect, ex, um, academics with high expectations. I, we specifically asked this group, because we know the, the focus that we're making on soc- social emotional learning and mental health, we asked specifically this teacher, and I can give you the quote. I said to her, so tell us about social emotional learning and mental health in your schools, what does that look like? And she was kind of confused, and she kind of posted it back with, well, what do you mean? So we gave her some examples of what we, what we do in our schools, and her exact line was, that's the family's job, that's the job of the family, that's their business. So it's very interesting, right, when you think about what we do and what their beliefs are. And again, I'm not telling anybody in this room or anyplace else what I believe is wrong or right, but I think there's pieces of this that we have to look at, and we have to ask ourselves about how we're prioritizing, what we're asking our teachers to do, what we're asking our students to do, and what are we asking our families to do? So, I wanna jump into what I, as an adult, felt like I was able to pull away, and I wanna capture it with images, just like we would with kids. So the first thing I wanna share with you is that, I, when you go into a foreign country, Japan, Korea, listening is so imperative, because you don't know what you're doing. I don't know what I'm doing, I didn't know a lick of either language, so I spent a lot of time, oh, looking at signs. And in Japan specifically, are very specific about expectations for, uh, for everyone socially, like, these are signs that are posted in the hotel, that tell you things like, please do not litter, please line up in order. That's while you're waiting to cross the street, right, you're lining up in order, and there's this little guy in a vest who's kind of like pushing you in that direction, and they do this. Because there's a firm belief that when you do those things, it makes everything else run smoother. So I think about our schools, and I tie this to our school, and you heard me say this on opening days, this is that idea of how we create accountability for kids, and how we have expectations, is the consistency and the modeling. And the continuation of making sure that kids understand, this is what we expect from them. Quick story, I would get up in the mornings, one of my favorite things to do when I go anywhere is to jog, right, because you get up early, you see a whole different place, right? So you get up in Japan, they start later there, like nine o'clock, so I was getting up at like seven early, because my times were off, and I would jog. First, first or second day, there's a couple of businessmen who are out on my way back, and I'm doing the typical American thing, right? I look at the street, the thing's blinking to stop, there's no cars coming, there's no one coming, I'm glitzing across, right? After like the third time, a guy waves me down, and he says, don't do that. And I was like, okay, he said, because if you do it now, you'll do it at night, and it messes everything up. He was like teaching me, and I thought to myself, that's the perfect example of what we say to kids, what you do when no one's watching, right, is what matters. And that reminded me of that idealism of, they do it at five in the morning, so that it doesn't make things crazy at five in the afternoon, when everyone's really trying to use those, those crossing patterns. So listening was incredibly important. First day there, they drop us off at this market outside of Tokyo, and it's a very, it's, it's a very traditional market, and they give us money, and they say, go, buy lunch. And it was tough, right, like, I thought I could figure it out, I could, I could use facial expressions, I, I didn't realize that there was a bribery thing that could go on in this system, so I was just like, I guess I'll pay thirty five dollars for street meat. But, like, so it was very interesting, and what it made me think of is our ELL students, right away, I thought about our ELL kids who come here, and they are in a new, potentially in a new location, and there's a language barrier. Like, how do we help them? And it made me really think about the empathy that we, and, and the support that we have to provide for people that are coming from those different positions, um, and how do we give them tools to be successful? The next one, this was very interesting to me, so this was, to me, was about perception, so this image is a, is in Hiroshima, and this is the atomic bomb dome, for those folks that were, that recognize. It was one of the only structures that was left standing after the atomic bomb was dropped. When I went there, again, I'm telling you objectively, this is not an opinion, I thought, as an American, born and raised, New York, high school and, and college graduate, I thought I was aware of what happened at Hiroshima, because I was taught this, right? But I have to tell you, in spending time listening that day, I also learned, once again, that the perception that I had was different based on my experience and what I was told. It made me think about how we support so many different people in our school and community, and that it's important to be thoughtful and even empathetic of why certain people might be acting a certain way. So when we did the tour, they were, there'll be a picture later, direct descendants from folks who were a part of that day, did the tour with you, and, and it's a very interesting feeling to be an American going through that and learning from those folks. Our view versus the view of, of the individuals who were part of that day. So, again, it made me think about the perception and how we can apply that when we think about the different people that we support. Learning, learning happened the entire time I was there. This one I applied, I took this picture because it made me think specifically of Red Jacket. So what you see in the foreground here is you see my, thing's not working great, but you see a traditional Japanese castle that was built with the moat and all of those things. That's a traditional Japanese castle, behind it, you can see the beginning of the city line, right, even over here, you can see like one of their huge baseball stadiums. To me, it reminded me of what we're doing in Red Jacket right now, which is we're trying to move forward with some big lifts, like our mascot change, but I think we're doing it in a way that we're trying to honor our history in the foreground, but know, moving forward, that there's pieces that are gonna look different. Food, this was a constant one, I went into the mindset, that I'm gonna eat everything, I'm gonna try everything, right, I was like, I still care, I'm an eater anyway, so I'm like, I'm gonna go into it. Um, what this made me think about was experiences for kids, because I was less, I struggled with taking some risks, because I had an experience. Some of the people I became friends with from Texas, from, um, the Bronx, or from Pittsburgh, they were like, oh, no, try this, this, this is, this is easy, right, or people that had traveled more than me helped me. So I think about our kids, how do we help them be risk takers? We give them more experiences, and we give them access to more things. Lastly, learning is so incredibly important, but this was reflection, so every day I took this picture of us, every day we would sit in one of the conference rooms in one of the hotels we were staying, and we would do what we called our end of the day debrief. And what I asked ourselves, when I did this every day, it felt so good, and I thought to myself, like, we need to find more time for our staff to do this, because it felt so good, because we talked about every day, and we challenged each other. Because it felt so good, because we talked about every day and we challenged each other. Like when we left Hiroshima, there was tears in this room, there was questioning of people's pride, it was all over the place, right? But it was so meaningful because we had these in-depth conversations as adults and how we were going to apply it to our children. Connecting, this trip to me just made even more hammered into my head the power of relationships. So this first picture, right here, we're on a gondola. You have a superintendent from Atlanta, you have me, you have two student travelers who we met when we were there, who are from the country of India. You have a superintendent from San Antonio, Pittsburgh, Dallas, Texas and the Bronx, New York. Not only are we different geographically, look at us physically, right? Way different. This is hanging in a gondola over the DMZ, right? To me, it captures the thing that we have to remind ourselves of how lucky we are. You're hanging over the DMZ. Two sections of countries that have so many things you would think in common, but are constantly on the threat of literally blowing each other up. And you have a gondola full of people that are all there collectively, different. And I show this picture because to me like that shows unity, right? Like we were there and we're all collectively there about education. So it just captures the power that I think we sometimes miss. This one, this is that picture in Hiroshima that I promised, right? You can't see it great, I'll share the slides with the board. And I'm going to share with the community and Chris is going to send some stuff out. But you can see us blended in with our guides, which were all direct descendants Japanese. And all of them were women in this case, who spent the day with us, they spent the morning with us. And they talked us through what happened that day. And things that I never learned as an American student was about two hundred yards from where that bomb dropped, there was an all-girls school that was completely devastated, that completely floored, right? And I never heard that story, but I heard it that day. So again, it reminded me of perception and it also reminded me of the power of healing and relationships because these people were spending this time with us and teaching us these things. And there's such different dynamics of where we come from and what we've learned compared to what they experienced. And the last piece is just these connections, you know? And if you look at the different folks, the top four are three out of the four superintendents from New York State. This is, you know, the group that I got to spend the most time with, that I traveled the most with at the bottom, right? And it was about the relationships. I'm in two group texts right now that have seven, eight different people and we're constantly having conversations about things that they're doing in Colorado, things that they're doing in Pittsburgh, things that they're doing in the Bronx. In Texas, that I just feel like constantly are helping me to connect with them, but also learn and grow of things that I can look at different for our district and our students. So I also have to make a funny connection because when I was in Red Jacket, when I was on the trip, they say to you when you go, "Hey, the nice thing is you're going to be with your colleagues and you're going to be in Japan and Korea and you're not going to see a single person that you know." Not true. Many of you know Mitch Lealik is our Spanish teacher who we all love, he's a cross-country coach, he's a track coach. Day three when I'm there, Mitch texts me and says, "Hey, I heard you're, I know you're in Tokyo, let's connect." We do this funny Mac thing that we figure out, we're about twelve minutes away from each other. So Mitch and I were able to hang out for a little bit in Tokyo. So pretty cool that no matter how far you're away, Red Jacket is still there. So the last thing that I shared was this statement came up over and over again in Japan. And I'm not going to butcher it for you, but that's what it says in Japanese. And what it means and basically translates to is, "It's not mine, it's not yours, but it's ours." And to me, it's about this idea of collective ownership that I've shared with the staff. That we can tie into the things that we're working on the most, which are culture, pride and unity, right? Those are the high level things that we've talked about as a district. How do we build a positive culture? How do we build a culture where folks feel like they are safe and that they can be engaged? How do we build pride? And how do we maintain the awesome traditions that we're here moving forward? And how do we do that in a way that creates unity for our staff, our community and our students? So before I tell you a little bit about that last piece, is there any questions from the board about my trip, my learnings, things that, pictures that I showed?
So foreign exchange program is something we should be doing.
So I'm going to talk about that right now. And so the one organization that we traveled with is EF. So for the board, I wanted to share a little bit quickly tonight. Who is EF? It's the world leader in international education. EF, education first, is family owned and operated since nineteen sixty-five. They offer seventeen products spanning across language learning, cultural exchange, academic achievement and educational travel. So they can foreign exchange students, they can travel like this. They employ over twenty-seven thousand five hundred educators, which is the most unique thing about that experience is that people that work for EF, everyone that I worked, that was on the triple S besides one, was a teacher. They had been a teacher, were teaching part-time, so it was very interesting because they were educators. And it's accredited with the schools and universities that they partner with. They can help you get college credits. And EF is just one example of a group. So what are the next steps? My next steps are, I have the board presentation tonight, I did my opening day presentation. I have the Rotary, actually it's coming to the district October twenty-second, so next Tuesday we're hosting a Rotary meeting in the conference room. And they are going to get this same presentation and they're also going to get a tour because many of them have not been in the district in a while. So we're going to do a little tour, show them some things. So I'm going to share with Rotary this presentation. I'm working with the social studies department at high school to present to our student populations starting on October twenty-third. I'm going to go back and do another staff presentation in November. And then what I'm asking the board is to not answer the question tonight, but is for us to think about as a school district, if we should think about providing these type of opportunities to our students. So again, I'm not asking us to answer that, it's not what I think we should be thinking about. And if so, I think we have some avenues to, and some connections from my experience, but I think it'd help us look at ways to do that. So I'll let the board kind of keep that in their thoughts and then we'll come back and explore it after I've had it October and November to share with the community and students. See where the interest level is in looking at a tour or something like this for our school, our students. The last thing I'll say about this, the nice thing is that it doesn't need to be inclusive, self-contained to just our district. The student groups that we saw, some of them were groups of seven students from the same, seven districts from the same BOSIs that partnered and sent kids. So it's not one of those where it only has to be us. It could be us sending twelve kids, Midlake sending twelve kids, Pell Mac sending eight kids. Something that could be more inclusive of a community or regional approach. So not all the responsibility falls on Red Jacket to say, "We have to fill a lot of these organizations' work, you have to fill a bus of forty kids that I don't take here." This is not the case. So I'll share with the board, any questions before I turn it back to Jamie?
Quick comment, so thank you very much for all of that and for sharing with us that experience. And you thanked the board for supporting that opportunity. And what I would say is from my perspective, it's easy to support that when you take advantage of, when you, when you have a person leading our district who's seeking personal and professional development. And not only that, who brings that back to the district, you know, the idea of taking the messages, the highlights, the bringing that experience back and using it as a teaching tool, a growth tool for all those that depend on our district leaders is to me, you know, the thing that makes it easy to support something like that. So thank you for not just taking the trip and getting some personal professional benefit out of that, but helping to make that into more. Thank you.
Thank you everybody.
All right. Your turn. Okay, bottom of the agenda, I suppose a little longer than normal, so let's keep it rolling. Next up is personnel, we do the personnel consent agenda as always, I'll ask if there's any concerns before we jump into it. Very good. The Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to educational law, approves the consent agenda items as presented. Motion from Chelsea, a second from Matt, thanks again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries, very good, thank you all. So that covers our personnel items for tonight, including we had a new hire who we recognized earlier on. So, we tried to pause for those, but we had a nice opportunity for them tonight, so thank you all. Which then brings us to CSE and CPSE. The Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to educational law, approves the CSE and CPSE recommendations as presented. We have a motion for Jamie, thank you, and a second Jen. We don't have Karen, doing the circumstances out of our control. If there are any questions, I guess let me ask if there are any questions and if so, we can either handle them or come back around. Looking good, okay, all right. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries, very good, all set there. Claims report is in your packet digitally. That's financial, sorry guys, moving on to financial. Reports and correspondence, any questions on that? All right. Superintendent report, do you have additional?
I just have one, I want to give one, two quick things. One, I just want to share my gratitude for all of our staff. We tried something a little bit different this year with open house and we did open house last week. All three buildings did that like on a staggered schedule. And the attendance was fantastic at the high school, middle school and always at the elementary. Will obviously work to get feedback from the community on how that went. The idea was if you have multiple students in different buildings, to be able to try to stack it into one day based on some feedback. So I have to just give a huge appreciation to our staff, they always make that such a great night for our families, for our students. So I just want to give a shout out to the leadership team as well as our staff for trying something new and hopefully we'll get good feedback on it. The last piece, I do want to recognize each board member has in front of them. October fourteenth through the eighteenth this week is New York State School Boards Association Board Recognition Week, which is different than Board Appreciation Month, which is in January, so you guys need to double down. And so Board Recognition Week, so each member has a plaque that we have for them from the New York State School Boards Association. And we also have our new lanyards that we gave to all staff and new staff get those, so we want the board to have those. And I did want to capture just quickly for everybody, I think people sometimes underestimate what the seven votes at this table do and the amount of work that goes into this. So I just wanted to read a couple of quick things. So to give some quick facts, school board members take one of the most important, significant responsibilities. Overseeing the education of our community's youth. Our Board of Education supports our local school system to ensure that our school is flexible and responsive to the needs of our community. Our school board is comprised of volunteers that do not receive any compensation for their service. They are individuals within our community who are dedicated their time to improving public education. Couple of things that I know our board prides themselves upon is creating a shared vision for the future of our education in our school. Developing a budget to present to our community, aligning that budget with district resources to improve achievement. Support, and they've made tremendous strides in supporting a healthy school district culture in which all folks can work and learn. And a fun fact that I wanted to share as I wrap up, two-thirds, about two-thirds of board members spend approximately six or more hours per week on board activities. So I just think it's important that we acknowledge and the folks that are here, if you can do a round of applause to the seven votes that sit in this.
All right, we don't often take a lot of time to be self-congratulated, but I think it's fair to say that everyone here puts in some hours and it's community service, whatever it is that's selected, so. All right, we have an opportunity for some committee updates. I know it's kind of going long here today, we're not going to rush through it, but I'd love to hear if there's updates from, you got Capital Project and Branding? Are there new, is there stuff to share, you guys? I don't think we've heard from you guys in a while on Capital Project.
Yeah, they're not reading until October twenty-eighth, so the meetings they've had thus far have not included the entire committee.
Yeah, so we'll have an update on October twenty-eighth, that the board will be able to have good information on the scope, the timeline and where that stands, also where that will lead to a final number potentially of financial.
Okay, and then was there updates on branding?
Yes.
We met the third, we're reviewing, I think, potential graphic designers and we're hoping to make a recommendation in November, right?
Okay. Okay, great, so we're getting inching closer to some official imagery and branding standards?
Yes, and setting time to them.
Cool, sorry, what was that?
Setting time to them.
Setting time, okay, awesome, great. Well, that committee's done excellent work so far and, you know, it's one thing to pick a name and now it's like, well, how do you get to the right place with the imagery? There's a lot of opinions on that too, so appreciate the continued work.
It's a fun process to go through.
Okay, I'm excited, I don't, you know, I don't know all that these guys know on that committee, so I look forward to hearing it just like others do.
Combining branding and Capital Project, the shade was finally replaced this morning with the correct terms on it, so we're good to go.
Yeah, there was a, I already told you.
I said a Benjamin Jacob, I already told you. Keep sending Jacob a picture, he's the one who saved us all.
Right, right, okay, that's right. I will just note, and I'm going to spend about two minutes on our goals, you guys, because I know it's been a long meeting already. But we will be adding probably a committee update around policy review. As for those who, you know, might be watching, obviously you all know that that's one of the things where we're going to be working to stand up a process and decide who all will be participating in that over time. That's obviously one of the board's most important responsibilities. So in fact, I'm just going to really quickly walk through you guys, if that's, I think we're at the committee updates, right? I'm not going to spend long, but, you know, we committed as a board to share with all of our stakeholders, with, you know, our, those that work in the district, with our students, with our community, what we were, the goals we were setting for the work we do as the Board of Education. And what I've got up on the screen here is the goals that we all agreed to. Now those of us on the board know that we've got an even longer list of very specific action items tied off to these goals. But we will also be posting the goals themselves on the website. I don't believe they're up yet, but I think that's our goal, is to get, so tonight really is just about sharing, you know, we've done some great work. And we have a lot of things, in fact, some of the things you've seen today around our student board members, around our digital pilot, which is now seeming to become, you know, a regular thing, around how we do our board meetings. These are all things that are part of these goals, so just to run through them really quickly. And for anyone who wants to know more detail or to review this document in detail, we'll be posting these to the website, it's not up there yet, but it's headed there. So few high level categories, board governance, so continuous improvement of our meeting effectiveness and efficiency. Our focus on policy management, that's what I was just mentioning, so we'll, we have some very specific action items. One of the most important responsibilities of the board is to ensure that the policies that govern how our district operates are continuously reviewed, up to date and doing the most good for the betterment of our district. Community relations, some great goals around making sure we're talking to all the stakeholders that are actively seeking feedback. Fiscal accountability, of course, we all know that approving a budget is a big part of the board, but that's really just the final step in a lot of work that goes into partnering with our business office and with the administrators to make sure that our budget reflects our priorities as a district. So that's a big part of that goal. And then vision, leadership and accountability, several here, really about the board members being active participants in the school community. Just simply establishing goals, which I think, I'm so impressed by this group, six hours a week, I mean, maybe it's four one week, but twenty-four another week, who knows? But those goals, we enlist these thirty items of specific actions tied to these goals. So I'm really proud of our group on that this year. And to lead by example in terms of professional development, so our commitment to continuously get better, knowing how to be a better board member. And also setting that example and supporting how we have our teachers become better teachers, our administrators be better at their job. And everyone in our district continuously learning and improving. So any comments from the board, you all have worked hard on this, I'm here sharing, but anything you want to share about this process or any of our specific goals? I know, it's been a lot of meetings, so this is not a good time to do that. But what we will do is we will keep an item on the agenda. And my hope is that we will review specific things we're doing in alignment with these goals, at least for a few minutes every meeting. So you can expect that, those who join us can expect the same. With that, we'll keep, can you move? Let's see, okay, financial reports, any questions on the financial reports, eight A? If not, I will go ahead and accept those on behalf of the board. And we have a contract adjustment. So let me get the resolution ready. So, let me get the resolution read here. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the amendment to terms and conditions of the confidential and managerial rule. If you get a motion, if there's a motion, I should say, Chelsea and a second from Amy. Any questions on this? Adjustments to the handbook for employees in that particular category? Okay, very good, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you very much. We're gaining time here, guys, we've got just a handful more items to go. New business, do we have to adopt the budget timeline? Or do we, was that just informational?
No, it's approved, it's approved.
We need to, we need to do that, okay, okay, I mean, I see a resolution here, I just, okay, so. Yep, no. All right, well, so what we've got on the next item, which is 9A, is not uncommon, those of you that are on the board know that we have a very strict and prescribed series of timelines to get the budget stuff through the process statewide and all that, so let me read the resolution here. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the 2025 to 2026 budget development calendar as presented. We have a motion. Jen, and a second from Amy. You guys get a chance to take a look, any questions? If you're newer, is there something in there that we can, you know, offer to help you understand what's ahead? All right, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, very good, motion passes. Kicks off another budget season, right? Wrestling collaboration, new business 9B. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves one wrestler and one coach to practice with the Red Jacket wrestling team. If I, do we have a motion from Chelsea and a second from Jen, thank you very much. Any questions, I thought this was neat, I didn't actually know about this until I heard about it.
Did you just say one thing, James?
Yeah, yeah.
The resolution, this one, it should say Bloomfield specifically, so I'll add that to the. It just says one wrestler and one coach.
Yeah, I was reading down the description.
Somehow it got left out of the motion.
Okay, so, so this will be approved subject to that change?
Yes.
Is to add the school neighbors to Bloomfield, so.
Well, it actually does say Bloomfield in the agenda, it just didn't say any motion.
Right, yep, yep, so the action will read in amended format, which will include the school name, yep. Any questions on that, you guys?
Is this, they don't have a wrestling program, is that what?
From my perspective, as a dad of a wrestler, I mean, anytime you get more kids in the room to, you know, practice together, get experience, I mean, that's typically win as long as everyone's on the same page from the expectations.
That's great, if they wanted to compete with the team, but.
It sounds like they wanna compete as Bloomfield, I have no personal knowledge of the.
I think, I think with a merger, both schools would move up a class, so, that wasn't very tense, it was just to, I think the wrestler, probably wrestle tournaments to as Bloomfield.
Sure, this is the time we used to lose consistently because we didn't have wrestlers, right, by last before we started.
That program's come a long way. Okay, if there are more questions, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you all very much there. All right, policy. Oh. I take for granted that you see it.
It was Chelsea and Jen.
Chelsea and Jen? Okay, perfect, thank you. Sometimes I feel like I'm doing an auction, I try to not, and I think sometimes my voice starts to sound that way, so I'm trying to like make a mental note to not do that, in case, all right. But thank you all for being very helpful in the, the last item before we adjourn is policy 1221, student representative to the Board of Education. Michaela, this has been a longer than usual meeting, actually, I think it's been a really interesting meeting, so they're gonna vary a bit. And just know when we say, if you've got stuff to go do, we'll never feel bad, but thank you for sticking around, I hope you found it interesting and we're gonna go ahead and go into the policy that will allow Michaela and Randy to officially be ex-official members, seems what we would say. So, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the waiving of the second reading, by the way, they're starting tonight, which is why we're waiving the second reading. Approves, yeah.
I have a question, why is the policy number different?
2245.
Oh, yeah, good question, I hadn't caught that. The file name says policy 2245. Tim, I don't know if that's, it's in the policy.
It says 2245.
Okay, so as a resolution, I don't know what policy 2 or.
Some resolution should go, it's gonna be removed at a couple of months.
Yeah, all the different ones were, because everyone doesn't have the exact policy, so they all have different numbers, so I might have taken it from a different, so not that different policy.
So, the 2245 is the right? So the resolution, as you see it in board docs, will be amended, instead of 1221, it will say 2245. Okay, yeah, good catch, thank you. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the waiving of the second reading and approves policy 2245 as presented. Motion, Chelsea, awesome, and second from Scott. Any further questions? I think we pretty much know what we're doing on this one. All right, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries unanimously, and welcome by Fisher, thank you. Anything further from the board before we move to adjourn? Considering all we've covered, 745, I think we did pretty darn well, thank you everyone for sticking with it, thank you for those who joined us as well. Right, and the days pass, this, all this, I've seen it a long time. Okay, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion from Amy and a second from Chelsea, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries, the meeting is.